Right, they're having court that day, that's why, you know, I've already checked it out with Sharon. So, that's why we're having to meet all over here.
Jan, may I come with the precinct boys at seven because I've got a train that takes...
Yes, me too. You can come, so.
Thank you.
Oh, write your name down.
I'm gonna come.
Are you gonna, you gonna get with a different department?
Yes, yes.
So you won't have everybody one day?
Right, right, that's what I'm gonna do. What is your schedule, Judge?
I'll have to check with them.
You know how long sessions they last?
Yes, see what a good time is.
I think it'll be less than an hour.
At seven, I will go, but not there.
Yeah, I don't think it'll last, is it just a one day? Yes, one day.
Should be less than an hour, wouldn't you think?
Right, right.
If it's not usually, some of it is just a matter of contacting them and brief going over it and finding out on the day.
Judge, the one thing that we ask them to do is to do a better job of explaining our healthcare that's provided because there was a lot of surprises with this plan that we're currently under that people found out later. So, we ask them to go to some depth on that, but I would think we could turn them in an hour.
And, Athlack will be there also on that day.
Okay, item seventeen, Lisa Valerita, Chanc- Forestville Chamber. A request to use the courthouse grounds and parking lot, December seventh, from twelve P.M. to ten P.M. for the Christmas Along the Corridor Festival of Light Parade. Also to set up the Christmas tree on the grounds, possibly inside the fenced area.
I am the life president of the chamber. I'm working on the Christmas Along the Corridor Festival Light Parade. We have a pretty exciting event set up. We do have Ben Murs and activities for the kids. So, we're asking to use the courthouse grounds and parking area. We kinda wanna push it around to also accommodate our parade route. We have all the activities sponsored by our local businesses and members. Then at six thirty, we're gonna start the parade. We are, we do have a twenty-one foot Christmas tree that we are asking to put up inside the fenced area mainly because it's our first experience with it. There are some guide wires that need to be secured to hold the tree up. So, being in the fenced area for now, let us take a look at it, see what needs to be done, possibly next year to accommodate it differently. Not sure what, you know, the situation will be next year with the fenced area and things like that. So, we wanted to, you know, get permission, of course, to use the grounds and to put that tree up and really bring out the spirit of Christmas for our event.
Got item B on here to put lights on the courthouse and I want to kinda take that up along with what we're talking about now. As the county attorney office, the courthouse was condemned for safety purposes. Did you look into our liability as far as putting the courthouse, the lights on the courthouse and inside the fence? Other than that, with approval as far as our liability is concerned, motion. Gammet, we filed all favors that couldn't get financed, you know, if we were not liable to bring down the structure.
How soon would I know that? Do you play ball? Okay, good, cause, you know, hopeful that we were gonna get our approval. The light company is already scheduled, Philip and I are scheduled to start work on it, hopefully tomorrow at three noon. But they, we still need to watch your inventory. And also need to put lights on some of the trees around there, just to get as lit as possible. And then...
They don't put one tree inside the fenced area.
No, no, no.
So, what I'm saying, our island area, there's no problem.
Wonderful.
That's covered and as far as, but inside the fenced area, we need to get...
Right, I'll certainly have an answer back to that.
I'm gonna go out and get my card real quick and I'll be right back with that information. Thank y'all very much and if y'all can plan to join us, we would love to have as many families and anybody who's interested in being in the parade, the library possibly. Our theme is a mascot's Christmas, so any mascot of choice would be wonderful and very festive.
Thank you.
Tomorrow's the only kind of ever a decorator when?
Well, we, we're all already counseling for tomorrow and Friday and maybe go into Monday if we don't get it finished. But, we do have volunteer volunteers or some help from the city and Florida electric. So, we should have, hopefully have enough manpower to get it done within the two weeks.
And I made a note, you did say the parade started at six thirty, correct?
Yes, that's the time that we have. I think once everything gets going, it ends at about seven, but we have everybody lined up ready to go about six thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, Leanne, how do we get an EMC, A, very good A, unit six. Can we take all three, you go one, two, and three under A at one time? Go on, broke out.
That's fine.
Item one is discuss and take action on release of construction letter of credit. Item two, discuss and take action on theft and name of letter of credit. And item three, discuss and take action on dedication and conveyance of road. Motion to withdraw, Riley second. All is clear. Okay, item B, non-standard plat, variance request. Item one under B, it'd be even crossing, one forty-four, discuss and take action.
Okay, this came before the development review committee last week and was given a favorable recommendation. Mr. Brown, Kevin, who's the developer, was asking to take an acre out of the property, out of the remaining acres that he hasn't developed yet and to sell it to an adjoining landowner which is in one acre lot in the subdivision.
And it's been reviewed by the community for the moment. Make it through, Riley second. Item two, County Road four thirty-six, one sixteen, and County Road four thirty-six, one eighteen. Clayton Shelley, discuss and take action.
Okay, this came before the committee and was given a favorable recommendation as well. Mr. Shelley owns thirteen point eight six acres. He is subdividing it into two lots. One of them, he can claim the large acre lot exclusion, but the other one is just one point two six acres. And it's got an existing home and electric on it that meets the forty-foot road frontage requirement. And we made sure that all of the septic system is on the one point two six acres.
And, item three, County Road three forty-five, four zero seventeen, Martha Nichols, discuss and take action.
Okay, this one came before the committee last week as well. This one was not given a favorable recommendation. It was given an unfavorable recommendation. Mr. Nichols was asking for a variance from having to provide the forty-foot of road frontage requirement. He wanted to subdivide off of an easement instead.
What kind of easement they're, they were talking about? Was that easement already there or?
It's not a county easement.
No, the private easement, is there a private easement already there?
It's, it's a county, it's a private road that went through the property back to, to the house.
It's a private drive.
Yes.
It's not a private road like a private road that's...
It's not a public private road, it's a privately run road. It's just a road, a road through a pasture that goes back.
Judge, I've talked to Mr. Nichols and I know exactly what you're talking about. And I don't, I find that everything is okay over there. I don't see a problem with it, so.
It's just a little bit of easement or?
Yeah.
But the committee gave unfavorable?
Well, the issue is that he's selling a piece of property to a family member in the center of it, but there is no easement that goes to that property. And the regulations require forty-foot easement.
No, not easement, road frontage.
Road frontage, but forty-foot on, on the road. And... There's existing tract of land of that house, it's been there existed. And I guess it's about our two hundred acre tract of land and they're taking that to, selling it to a family member. And the biggest problem is they doesn't have a forty-foot easement, but they have, Rodaway, but they have the Rodaway Road that goes to that existing property now.
It can be remedied if they survey an easement to the piece of property.
It's a forty feet.
Not an easement, road frontage.
Road frontage. Could you get with them and ask them to get with an attorney and?
Mr. Nichols is here and he would, I don't know, if you want to speak. Hey, there he is.
Do you have an attorney that prepared the deed and everything?
Well, the survey attorney, the legal script for the easement and the one point one seven acres, two acres I'm gonna sell. And it is correct that that one point one seven is not, has little frontage, but through a creation, through the exception of such a family member. But there is a road that goes to the property that's been there for a month or a month or so. And we're getting a parental legal script for that easement, which will provide access to that property. The lender does not have an issue with lording money on that property given the fact that there's an easement, so it's not landlocked.
But what we run into though is if we don't follow the standards that we set up and in the future, if someone decides to sell that piece of property, then it creates a problem. It would probably be to your advantage to go ahead and get an attorney to, to go ahead and survey all, you know, out for the, for the, so it's designated, you know, whether you utilize it or not. So, it's designated there in case they have need to sell it at some other later date. That's, that's my understanding, but, I mean, I'm not, not an attorney by no means, but that's the reason we have a committee is to research all this and...
Okay, I'll, I'll do, you know, we'll accept it with the variance and then try to, you know, move along with the sale without any further delay or expense.
So, instead of the thirty, you have to get a forty?
Road frontage. He was proposing to sell that one point seven acres to his niece with an easement. And our subdivision regulations require road frontage. You have, you have to own...
A flag track essentially.
Yeah, you've got to own all of that property and you've gotta have forty foot of your property that you own butting up against a public road.
Yeah, you don't have to build a road, you don't have to build a fence, but it has to be tied to the property so at a later date, if it's sold...
An easement, we have a simple way of thinking.
Judge, I'd like to make one other comment on this, cause I was, I voted in favor of the gentleman that I was on a committee. And the reason why, and I express my concern, my opinion is, this is a two hundred acre tract of land. It's always been owned by a family and, and they're trying to sell this house now to a niece, a family member. They're not changing anything, nothing's been ever done. And to me, they, I just think it's kinda grandfathered because it's always been there. Nothing is changing now, you know. Now, if he was gonna take that tract of land and sell it to some other individual and make a bunch of money off of it, that's a whole different situation, you know. That's my only thought.
I guess the thing is, if he surveys it and puts it in the deed as to what it is, nothing has to change as far as their living arrangement, you know. I mean, they, he can utilize it however he wants to. But in the future, should his niece decide that for some reason she's not able to hang on that property for whatever reason, then she, she would have the opportunity to move that piece of property. Isn't that...
That's correct, but he would have to give up more property to give, you know, for that forty foot easement because the property is his way of, faculty.
So, if he can put it on a legal description of the thirty foot easement that he has right now, would that be fine or?
No, it's still, an easement does not meet the regulations. Our subdivision regulations require a road frontage. Each tract created has a minimum forty foot of road frontage, not an easement.
Now, I was saying that is, you know, there's the exception which, you know, I was asking for very specific on it and my way of remedying that was the use of the easement. And the easement serves more than, you know, I use the same easement my niece and her husband would use the same easement and my brother would use the same easement, this family land, we use the same road and it branches off.
But if he surveyed an additional ten feet into the thirty feet, that would be okay?
No, because it's still an easement. The whole problem is...
If the couple has a divorce and they sell and they're not able to purchase the property, there's where the problem could come in from the county's, and from...
May I ask what the, how the county would suffer in the future if that proceeding had been unlikely to take place?
The county really wouldn't suffer though, it itself, it'd be more of a civil supercharge than a legal.
The reason I want the ten acres at the time for my brother is to prevent him being sold outside the family and so we create a subdivision.
I, I tell you what, I'm kinda at a disadvantage because I'm not familiar with the place and so forth and so on. And the subdivision committee, like I said, they were formed for this reason to make sure that... What I would suggest is that go back to subdivision committee and work together to see if you can come up with some, with the forty foot easement, easement on it.
It's not an easement, it's a forty foot front.
Okay, how far the front is?
All the way from that tract of land, all the way up to the county road.
So, he could, he could probably give up another couple hundred acres, I mean, two acres or something.
Well, but I guess what I'm saying is, as long as it stays in the family, it's surveyed there. I mean, they can have whatever, but in the event it's sold, then it, it goes and I don't think they have any desire of selling the property.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be in his name, it'd go to his niece's name.
Yeah.
It would have to do. I think that's what he's trying to do. You have the map that you're...
When the property gets sold, will that be a problem later on in the future that we're coming to?
Not us.
It'd be, it'd be a problem that the board would have to deal with if they, if they go back before the committee.
The committee was designed because we...
Why can't we sell it, you know?
We've had some old situations like this that we've had to deal with that are from here. We have to come up here at forty foot.
But it'd just be, like I said, if they have an agreement set up with themselves, he can main use it, utilize it, they have the same way you always have. While it's there and in the records that it's there in case he has to buy it or sell it.
Judge, one of the things that I told Mr. Nichols that day was that we don't care what road he drives down, what driveway he drives down. It, he can continue to do that, he doesn't have to improve that forty foot. All of it, it just needs to be on record that it, it'll get you access to that one little piece of property.
That's what I was saying.
I mean, he can drive wherever he wants to, through his pasture, you know, wherever. This also cuts diagonally across properties, it's not something straight in. It is one of the other problems with the existing easement that you have. If it just came straight in, it'd be a little different, probably easier to deal with.
Let's take this, go back to the, to the committee and work with them, see what you can come up with.
Could I ask the...
Ask the question? Sure.
Okay, so, the plan submitted has been disapproved by the committee. To go back to the committee, and what I'm hearing today, it sounded like nothing had changed.
Well, it depends, what I'm, what I'm seeing is, I think we've offered a solution for you to go and have it surveyed and placed in there. And, you know, if you get that intact, I don't see any reason the committee would turn that down.
As a matter of fact, we told them that...
So, okay.
So, are y'all, are y'all, or vote on it?
We'll just take it back to the committee and we'll...
Payback, go back to the committee and with, with the changes to be made and to comply with the committee and bring it back for proof. Item C, utility permit, one permit from four eighty-one, some spring horses, five precinct three, County Road three forty-two, being approved. And item two, there's free permit, four eighty-one, some spring horses, five precinct four, County Road four oh one, being approved by Commissioner Riley. Mr. Riley, all favor? Item D, temporary water line. Item one, disinformation on it.
Disinformation on it.
Quick, item precinct four, County Road three, four sixty. And item two, it's hunt hall precinct two, County Road two oh five. On item nineteen minutes, everyone had an opportunity to review the names?
Okay, correction, okay. On the minutes, on the cover fourteen, please, not cover fourteen?
Cover fourteen.
Under the health report, number four, I would give that to all of the committee. Oh, yeah, I missed that one already.
Will I, you want?
With that correction, motion, Commissioner Riley, second.
Oh, on that, oh, okay, okay. Who is Riley first, please?
Yeah, item twenty, financial support.
So, are you abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna report, but I do have legal changes. Nathan Jamala received a master's certificate on eleven one, two thousand and thirteen, twenty-five dollars a month for an five oh one.
So, to add his name on to.
Okay, for the record, we're on item twenty-one, favorable per head.
Catherine Chapman was hired eleven one, two thousand and thirteen, Department three twenty, as an assistant county attorney and four thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month, assistant county attorney. Now, we had a correction officer hired eleven thirteen, which is today. And I know I'm gonna mess up his name, so I apologize. Scorasho Arana.
Mine is Martinez.
Sora, Sora, Sikoro Arana.
I understood that time.
He was hired Department four twenty, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a month as a correction officer. And Charles Lipowatzek the third resigned ten twenty, two thousand and thirteen, Department four twenty, as a correction officer.
That's it?
That's it.
Comment, question, motion? Mr. Gammet, Commissioner Riley, all favor?
Judge?
Yes.
This gentleman would like to know if he could offer this to our employees, that legal service fee.
What I do, Judge, is just set up a table, next, I think you have enrollment next week. As the points filter in, I would be able to visit with them. It's purely voluntary, there's no contract on what we do. If they want it for one month, they want it for one month.
Okay, we'll go back to item fifteen, Ray Watson, discuss and take action. Anyone have an objection, gonna set the table up outside there, outside the entrance area?
Wherever you would like to be, as long as it's warmer than it is today would be great.
I would assume where we have other auxiliary entrance.
With the Athlack and...
Take a motion. Item twenty-five, Bill?
We'll take a break.
Oh, I'm...
Don't have the steel thing on the outside. Could be, but, but I think if we do one and don't do the other, it's a big problem.
Everyone can operate from either of them.
I think they, uh, have to work. That's got a nineteen vote, come back and order it down.